Did y'all stay up there?
Eight to nine, Sunday. We were in Agunkwet, Southern, Southern Park.
Good evening, everyone. It is six o'clock on June 21st, 2022. It is time for our Gallatin City Council meeting. I welcome you all this evening. As we begin the meeting, we'll begin like we do each meeting with invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. This evening, our city engineer, Nick Tuttler, is going to offer our prayer, and then Councilman Hayes will lead us in the pledge. If you'll stand with me, please.
If you will, join me in prayer. Thank you. God, we come to you this evening, and once again, we're so grateful to be here and be in your presence in front of you. And Lord, I pray that, God, we would recognize all the many blessings that we do have, that we would start this meeting by just, just being thankful for what we have been given. We are blessed beyond measure, and Lord, I pray that we would recognize that and just enjoy that. And God, I pray that you would give us wisdom, that you would give the decision-makers wisdom tonight. We know that each of these elected officials has been appointed by you, and we pray that they would seek your wisdom in guidance and decision-making for this great city that you have blessed us with. Lord, I pray that you would bless those that have gathered here in support and those that are gathered here to offer more opinions and wisdom. Lord, I pray that you would bless them and that you would just guide us in what we do tonight. We love you, and all these things that we do pray in the name of your son, Jesus. Amen.
Please do you want me to pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and now Ms. Kitterell will call the roll for us.
Vice Mayor Feneau. Councilman Fann. Councilwoman George. Councilman Hayes. Councilwoman Love. Councilman Overton. And Councilman Alexander is absent, but we do have a quorum.
Thank you, Ms. Kitterell. Before you, you have the minutes from the May 17th, 2022 council meeting and the June 7th, 2022 council meetings. I have a motion to approve by Councilman Overton and a second by Councilwoman Love. Are there any additions or corrections requested? Seeing none, all in favor of approving both sets of minutes, please say aye. Opposed, please say no. They are unanimously approved. We'll move now to public recognition on agenda-related items. I will remind you that there is a time at the end of the meeting for public recognition on non-agenda-related items, but this is the time for agenda-related items. You will have five minutes to speak. We ask that you introduce yourself and share your address with us for the record. Also want to tell both the council and the public this, that based on a complaint that we had last week by one of the speakers, our attorney has advised us that we should not respond to any of the public comment that is made. So it will be public comment only with no exchange with me or the council. And after the public comment is closed, then we can entertain whether we would like to discuss any of the issues brought up under public comment. And if we do, we may, and if we don't, we won't. So that is how we are going to roll moving forward. I hope you understand and appreciate Ms. Haemecali's wife, Council. With that, public comment on agenda-related items is now open. You may come forward.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Pascal Javens, 1335 Longwood Park. There's so many staff tonight to talk about, but I have only five minutes, so I'm gonna have to choose. Because really, a bunch of stuff on this agenda are linked together. We have commercial, we get replaced by hometowns. We have tax rate. We have employee salary raise. Everything is linked together. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna keep to the salary raise, because I think that's a hot topic and that's important. I was surprised on all this agenda meeting to see only few pages on that. So I did a document request and asked for more, more information. So I had access to plenty of things that people can't see. First, I want to thank Rachel, Lori, and Connie for the fantastic job they did. It's like they put a lot of hours on that, and everybody should know about it, and I appreciate it. Now, it's great, it's great that employee is gonna get a raise, but of what I've seen in all these documents, and hopefully you can talk about it after, my first question is what's gonna happen next? I don't think it's enough. I don't think the city can afford more right now, so that's gonna stick to what is there, but what are we gonna do next? We all know that the economy is changing, and the raise our employee is gonna go, gonna get hit by the economy right now. You all know me, staff, I've been really fan of and fighting for our first responders. So again, our first responders gonna get a raise, the fire department gonna get a raise, but it's not enough for the fire department. When we go to all these tables, firefighter one, even if they work 56 hours a week instead of the 40 hours a week other employees do, they basically make the same hourly rate and cashier at the city. And EMT make the same hourly rate that the customer service clerk. A lieutenant at the fire department, and I know that got bought before by, the last study was done a few years ago for the fire and police. A lieutenant made the same hourly rate than a police officer training. And the captain at the fire department make the same hourly rate that a police officer too. So we have some issues there we need to be fixed still. Another staff who showed up in long, long documents, so I can't really print it, is the salary index. So the gentleman who came here basically made a presentation and talked about the salary index. Basically, that the percentage based on the average salary for the same position on all the study, on the 19 different study he did. And what really surprised me is that we have such a difference on salary index between a lot of department and position. One with me the most is on the EDA department where the salary index go up to almost 140%. So EDA department make 140% more than the average people paid for the same position in Tennessee and all the cities the study made. By comparison, on the fire department, some people are making still only 85.6% of the average salary on the salary index. Public utility go to 91%, IT department under 90%, park and rec 88%. And police, the lowest one, make 88.7%. So.
Not sure time is up.
Yes, ma'am. So that would be nice if everything was leveled, so we arrive to people getting paid what they're supposed to. Thank you, Mayor.
Is anyone else wishing to speak under public comment on agenda-related items? You can come forward at this time. Seeing no one, I will declare public comment on agenda-related items closed and move now to Mayor's comments. I do have a few events to mention to you. I will do that before we make a couple of presentations. The first is there's another blood drive happening on, well, that was today, never mind. Sorry, we missed that. On the 23rd, the Get to Know Gallatin series continues. On the 23rd also that evening is the Antique and Classic Cars Cruisin'. Remember, that's every Thursday at the Civic Center. This Friday is the Employee Picnic at Triple Creek Park. Council, I hope that you guys may be able to stop by there. This weekend, at the Gallatin Farmers Market, 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., is Bee Day at the Farmers Market. And I want to mention that to you because I've been a couple of times when they've had the Bee Day, and it is fascinating. And some of the vendors there who are really involved with honey or raising bees, they really do some great educational programs. So I think it would be particularly attractive to children. So I'd encourage you, if that interests you or you have children who may be interested, go over there and check that out. They do a great job with it. Also this weekend, there's another fun thing that I never would have thought was fun if I hadn't attended myself, and that's the Amateur Radio Field Day that happens on Saturday and Sunday out at the Lot Four Park, the part that has the point that goes down to the water. And it is so interesting. And again, it's filled with experts in amateur radio, and they just love teaching about it. And so they would really be interactive with your children if you wanted to take them out there to help them learn more about amateur radio. Next, Friday night, the first, is the Downtown Gallatin Cruisin'. And then on the 4th of July, I will just remind you that the festival is happening this year, sponsored by Pelican Snowballs. It's at Triple Creek Park. It begins at 3:00. Fireworks are at 9:00, and then everyone will be going home from there. That concludes the Mayor's comments, but right now, I would like to ask Maddy Rippey and her folks to join me at the podium for a proclamation. Ladies and gentlemen, I am delighted to introduce you Maddy Rippey, who is the June Dairy Month Chairman. And I love doing this each year. I think dairy month is such a wholesome part of who we are as a region and as a community. And so I appreciate the efforts that you are putting out to educate people about the importance of dairy and where dairy comes from and all the things that people don't necessarily recognize. And this is a piece of that. This is a proclamation. Proclamation, and it says, "Whereas Tennessee dairy farmers and the dairy industry have contributed to the development and well-being of Gallatin, Tennessee since the city's earliest formation by the General Assembly in 1802, and whereas the dairy industry is a major contributor to citizens all across the county, state, and nation, and has a significant impact on the health, welfare, and the economy of our nation, and whereas milk and milk products provide numerous physical, psychological, and nutritional benefits to the growth, energy, and overall wellness of our citizens, and whereas real milk and milk products are undisputedly superior to their imitations in quality, taste, and value, therefore, now I page Brown Mayor, the City of Gallatin, to hereby proclaim June 2022 as Dairy Month, thereby highlighting the dairy industry and asking that all citizens of Gallatin join in celebrating 85 years honoring dairy farmers and observe the month with appropriate programs and activities." And so I'm particularly honored to do this this year. My family just left the dairy industry, and there was a dairy here in Gallatin many years ago. But I do have cousins who are dairy farmers, and I respect the people that do that every day for a living. And they bring us important, like this says, important valuable nutrition that you can only get from milk, right? Ms. Rippey, do you have something that you would like to distribute?
Yes, we do.
To the council members? Okay, have at it. I'm gonna let you do that. I'm gonna give this to your mother.
String cheese, ooh. Thank you very much. And congratulations. Anybody have crackers?
While she's doing that, we have some other presentations to make this evening. I'm gonna invite James Fenton up here. This is for the graduates of the Gallatin Government Institute. And it was actually an EDA initiative begun several years ago and kind of interrupted by the pandemic. But this is a real opportunity for people to come into the City of Gallatin, learn about our various departments, what they do, and really the parameters that we have as a city that a lot of people don't realize that we have. I hope you all have found it interesting. I am so very, very appreciative of you taking the time to participate, and I think it's valuable. I think that you helped tell the story of our community, and you learned a lot more than the average citizen knows, and I hope that you can continue on and help educate. But thank you so much. You sacrificed time, energy, your brain to put effort into this, so thank you, because that help makes our city so much better. Mr. Fenton, I would ask if you want to say anything before we present the certificates?
Particularly attentive group this year, really appreciated the input and the feedback. As I mentioned last time, I think it's gonna give us the ability to improve what we've done here. But again, I pretty appreciate the consistent attendance and those of you that have spent the extra time here. It makes a difference. And truly, as the mayor had said, please spread the word about how we go about government here. It makes a difference. Thank you. I've got pins for them also.
Oh, how lovely. I love these pins. So we are going to present the certificate. Someone asked everybody to stay up here so we can get a group picture after we finish. But the first recipient is Deborah Blade Oaks, and thank you so much. The second recipient is Adriana Breonis. Did I say that correctly? And next is Anita Durham. Thank you for your participation. Laramie James. I was particularly impressed because Laramie is a city employee, and he even went above and beyond to participate. Did you learn anything? I'm so glad. He is so involved in our community, and I really appreciate that. Josiah King. Rick Murphy. Okay, next is Stephen Oldham. Jeremy Poindexter. Alan Ray. Denise Shepherd. And finally, Katrina Sweat. Thank you all so much for your participation in this, and my congratulations to you for the completion. So I hope you will stay engaged. All right, so that concludes the Mayor's comments. I did fail to offer the council the opportunity to discuss the public comment, so if anyone would like to do that, please feel free to do so. And if not, we will move on to the regular agenda. Okay, the regular agenda. Item number one is dangerous building complaint about the show and show calls hearing for 215 South Boyer Street. For that, Chuck Stewart, our building official, and Susan Haemecali, our city attorney, are introduced. And I guess in Chuck's stead, it is.
Kevin Black.
And before we get started, I'd like to ask, is the owner of 215 South Boyer's present or a representative? I don't see him here.
I had gotten word that he may not be able to attend, and I think he may have talked with someone in codes today. He's definitely aware that we're having the hearing tonight. So, Mr. Black, I'm just gonna let you kind of state your name for the record, and we will get started.
All right. Kevin Black, Gallatin Codes Department.
And, Mr. Black, can you give this council a brief history of, this, I think is the third time that we've had this particular building brought before them, if you can give them a little history of that, please?
Yes. On October 19th of 2021, well, let me go back. This building was first posted 2/28/20. And then October 19th of 2021, we gave the owner 30 days to pull permits for repairs. On, it came back to council again on 1/4 of 2022 this year, and we gave him another 15 days to pull repair permits for repairs. He did submit a permit application, and he was told that he needed to, had two weeks to submit a structural engineer report and 30 days to obtain a general contractor and submit plans. He did submit the structural engineer report on 2/17 of this year, but no contractor has been obtained or plans received to our department.
And can you also brief council, I know we've had some other testimony that's been on the record, but will you just re-initiate this council with the issues at 215 South Boyer's?
The issues are, it's a concrete block building. The issues are roof-related. The roof rafters are exposed, as you can see. This is a current picture. This was taken within the last month. The rafters are exposed, they're rotting, so this building is in danger of a roof collapse. It's continuing to, the roof is continuing to decay. So that is the, really the extent of the problem.
And in your opinion, as the designated for the codes official tonight, does the property at 215 South Boyer's, is it a dangerous building unfit for human occupation or use?
It is unfit for human occupation or use, yes.
Are there any other testimony that you think you need to present to council at this time on this property?
No, not at this time.
Let me ask you one other question. In your opinion, can the property be repaired for less than 50% of its reasonable value?
Possibly. It's hard to determine the value. It probably could be repaired for less than 50. Are you including property values with that, too, or?
The structural.
Structural value? Quite possibly it could be.
So what is your recommendation for this building, demolition or repair?
Our recommendation is for council to take action. This building either needs to be repaired or it needs to be dismantled and removed, one or the other.
All right, council, you've heard the testimony.
Seems like we've given them ample opportunity to repair it.
Motion declared dangerous building.
So we have a motion, a second declaring it a dangerous building. Does it automatically give the 90 days to remedy before the city?
Well, the city can't do anything for 60 days because they have 60 days to appeal, so he would have 60 days. Any owner has 60 days to make repairs or to demolish the building from the time an order is issued. The city will not take any action for 60 days.
Or come to the council and make their case if it.
They've, they've had three opportunities.
Well, I agree with you.
To the council, so I would not open that back up. But I would, you know, we need to determine tonight, is it a dangerous building or not, and issue an order.
Thank you. I thought it was 90 days, so 60 days, I appreciate. And I don't disagree with your counsel in this instance at all. So we have a motion, a second. Is there any further discussion, any questions for Mr. Black or Ms. Haemecali?
I will say, you know, I'm really asking questions here, but I did speak with someone today that was a representative of this owner who said it is his intent to make the repairs and to get this building rectified.
He has that opportunity for 60 days. So, okay, this is declaring the building located at 215 South Boyer's is a dangerous building. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, please say no. Unanimously declared such. Item number two is a dangerous building complaint and show calls hearing at 614 Peach Valley Road. Again, well, Mr. Black and Ms. Haemecali.
And is anyone here on this property, and I believe it is 614, yes, if you want to just go ahead and come forward? And Mr. Black, if you would come back forward, please. Since this is a, this is a separate hearing, I'm gonna need you to state your name for the record again, please.
Kevin Black, Gallatin Codes Department.
And what is your purpose here tonight?
We are requesting that this property at 614 Peach Valley Road, action be taken by council on it.
And can you give the council a brief history of this property and this property having come before the council prior?
This property was posted August 27th of 2020. It came to council 10/19 of 2021. Action was deferred for 30 days. At, a demolition permit was issued to the owner, to Misha Walker. This was issued on 11/5 of 2021. We gave her the permit. It expired 5/4 of 2022 this year, and no action has been taken at the property. This is a current picture also that was taken within the last 30 days.
And Mr. Black, can you list for the council the issues with this property, this building?
Well, this issues, this property has a roof that is, it's hard to see from the picture because it's so overgrown. The roof has collapsed and parts of the house, it's, of course, the windows, the doors, everything's all just deteriorated to the point of unsecured.
And there are, of course, a lot of other factors that are in the materials that were presented to council. And what is your recommendation for this property?
Our recommendation on this is just to dismantle and remove this building.
Are there any other testimony you would like to present to council? Walker?
Why haven't, I had a demolition when I did this permit. The guy kind of like reneged on me. And then over the years, you know, with me grieving, my dad. dad's just been gone eight months. So I've been trying to also take care of my two kids, and I adopted my little cousins after this, because my mom had them ever since they was one and two. So I've been kind of like a busy lady by myself doing all of this. So that's the reason why I try to keep maintenance on the yard, but it's just me. I have an older brother, a little brother, but I'm just trying to hire people and have time to, at the time when I said I was going to do that, I was, you know, constantly calling people, trying to see. Then I had a guy that said he was going to demolish in December, then winter, then, you know, things happened, and then had to worry about the kids. But right now, I have a crew to clean up around the house. I got everything pooled, gas, everything lines pooled, so it's not much. Nobody's trying to live, but yes, I know the house needed to be tore down, grass needed to be cut. But what's so funny is, nobody lives there, and the codes man can go out there, but it seems like every time I go out there and check on this property, somebody has let the window up, somebody has let the doors open, because I closed the door. When we cleaned this, and I have pictures from before when I was here, on the 21st, of when, how we cleaned the lot, when the first time we got reported last year, I have pictures that I didn't show last time because nobody asked. But this is how it accumulated from the time of last year of December to now. So I'm just trying to get somebody out there to help me.
What is your intent? Is your intent to get another demolition?
Uh, yes. And soon as I get the money, which I've been selling my dad things, so, I mean, I'm doing the best I can by myself. I mean, I'm just going through selling, trying to get the money to get, to pay people to tear this house, so I won't have to be here anymore.
I understand. Is there anything else that you would like to tell council about this property?
Um, no, nothing at all. I'm just going on the grace of God.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, council, you've heard testimony, and now it's up to you to determine what you want to do with this property. I move to declare it a dangerous building.
Second.
A motion to declare the property at 614 Peach Valley Road, dangerous building, and that's by Councilwoman George, a second, by Councilwoman Overton. Open the floor for any discussion.
Mayor, I will, I will say, as our city attorney said, you still have 60 days or whatever to get somebody to do this, to save you some money, so the city don't, so you still have time to do it, okay? But we're going to declare it a dangerous building, so if you can't get it done, then the city will tear it down, okay?
That's what I'm saying.
Thank you.
If it comes down to it, I'll come back up here and call you, give you all the money. I'm just trying to do it in a way that won't just break me from work.
It will be much, it'll be much cheaper for you if you hire someone and the city does it. And if the city does it, the city puts a lien on the property. I want to make sure you understand that. Okay? Any further questions or discussion, Ms. Walker? Thank you for being here. I know that you've had difficult times. I'd be thinking of you and your family. Absolutely. You take care. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, please say no. Okay, it is declared a dangerous building. Item three is third reading on ordinance 02205-26. Councilman Alexander is not here this evening. Councilwoman Love, do you want to take this?
Sure. This is third reading on an ordinance to provide revenue for the City of Gallatin for municipal purposes for the 2022 tax year and the 2023 fiscal year, and I so move.
Motion by Councilwoman Love, second by Vice Mayor Fennell. This sets our tax rate and is the final reading on this. And so we remind everyone again.
No taxes.
Yes, the tax rate remains at 80 cents, down a few years ago from 90. It was 99 cents, right? I've already forgotten. Yeah, so it's a solid tax rate with no increased burden on our taxpayers, for which I'm grateful, and I think we all are. So, any questions, discussion? Third reading on ordinance 02205-26, this is the only thing we ever have a third reading on. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It is unanimously approved. Item number four is second reading on amended ordinance 02205-20. Councilwoman George?
Thank you. This is an ordinance amending Gallatin Municipal Code, Chapter 3, alcoholic beverages. I so move.
Motion by Councilwoman George, a second by Councilman Overton, opening the floor for discussion.
Yeah, if y'all don't mind, I'd like, I'd like to defer this for another two weeks, so I can do a little bit more research on this, if that's okay.
So I motion.
That motion.
Motion to defer by Councilman Hayes, a second by Vice Mayor Fennell. Any questions, discussion? Okay, all in favor of deferring consideration of amended ordinance 02205-26, say aye. Opposed, please say no. It will be deferred until the next council meeting. Okay, item number five is second reading on ordinance 02205-25. Councilman Hayes?
Yeah, this is an ordinance of the City of Gallatin, Tennessee, amending the Gallatin zoning ordinance, Article 2, Section 2.02. Definitions, Article 3.0. Use classification, Section 3.07. Commercial activities, class and types, Article 7. Provisions for mixed use districts, Section 7.02. Intent and description for the MRL, Multiple Residential and Office District, Section 7.03. Intent and description of the mixed use district, Article 8.00. Provisions for commercial districts, Section 8.01. Intent and purpose of CC Core Commercial District, Section 8.04. Intent and purpose of the PGC Plan, General Commercial District, and Section 8.05. Intent and purpose of the PNC Plan, Neighborhood Commercial District, to prevent animal care limited as a permitted use and remove the use of animal care with the following conditions, authorizing the revision to be made to the zoning ordinance, repealing conflicting ordinances, providing for separability, and providing for an effective date. Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilman Hayes, second by Councilman Fan. Is there any discussion? Okay, this is second reading on ordinance 02205-25. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It passes unanimously. Item six is second reading on ordinance 02205-28. Councilman Overton.
Thank you, Mayor. This ordinance amending Gallatin Municipal Code, Chapter 9, Fire Protection and Prevention, Section 9-61(c)(2), by amending the number of residential dwelling units in the development that were required, two separate fire apparatus access roads, and I so move.
Motion by Councilman Overton, second by Councilman Hayes, and this changes the number from 50 to 30? Is that right? To communicate the information.
50 to 30.
Okay, there we go.
I want to say, as I said at the committee meeting, this has nothing to do with the current subdivisions that's there right now. This is, any additional subdivisions that we vote on needs to have two interests if it's in, within the number of houses.
Most of the development laws are not retroactive, they're for new development. So thank you for that, Councilman Overton. Is there any further discussion? This is second reading on ordinance 02205-28. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It does pass unanimously. Item number seven is second reading on ordinance 02206-29. Councilman Fan?
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance appropriating funds from 2021 water sewer revenue bond issue series 2021B in the amount of $15,4,257.16, and I so move.
Second. Motion by Councilman Fan, second by Councilwoman George. Are there any discussions? Seeing none, this is second reading on ordinance 02206-29. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Second reading passes unanimously. Item number eight is second reading on ordinance 02206-30. Vice Mayor Fennell?
Thank you, Mayor. This is ordinance amending ordinance number 02109-53, appropriating funds for 2021, 2022 carryover capital projects to correct a clerical error. Motion to approve.
Motion by Vice Mayor Fennell, second by Councilman Overton. It was basically a $100 difference, I do believe. Any discussion on this? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Second reading on ordinance 02206-30 is unanimously approved. Item number nine is second reading on ordinance 02206-31. Councilwoman Love?
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance amending ordinance number 02109-55 to correct a clerical error in the numbering of the street department equipment account listed in the ordinance. I so move.
Okay. Okay, motion by Councilwoman Love, second by Councilwoman George. Any questions, discussion? This is second reading on ordinance 02206-31. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It has passed unanimously. Item 10 is second reading on ordinance 02206-32. Councilman Alexander is not here. Vice Mayor Fennell, would you like to take this?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. This is an ordinance amending ordinance number 02203-10 to collect, to correct clerical error in the numbering of Miracle Park Field account and clerical error in the numbering of lighted crosswalks account as listed in the ordinance. Motion to approve.
Motion by Vice Mayor Fennell, second by Councilman Fan. Any discussion, questions? Second reading on ordinance 02206-32. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It is unanimously passed. Item number 11 is second reading on ordinance 02206-33. Councilman Hayes?
This is an ordinance amending ordinance number 02205-21 to correct a clerical error in the numbering of the insurance recovery account listed in the ordinance. Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilman Hayes, second by Councilman Overton. Is there any discussion? Second reading on ordinance 02206-33. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It has passed unanimously. Item 12 is second reading on ordinance 02206-34. Councilwoman George?
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance appropriating funds in the amount of $179,000 for the parks and rec departments. I so move.
Motion by Councilwoman George, second by Councilwoman Love. Is there any discussion and questions? Second reading on ordinance 02206-34. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It's passed unanimously. Item number 13 is first reading on ordinance 02206-35. Councilman Overton?
Thank you, Mayor. This ordinance authorized additional funds in the amount of $400,000 from natural gas reserves for warehouse office renovations, contract 222, and I so move.
Motion by Councilwoman, sorry, Councilman Overton, second by Councilwoman Love. Is there any discussion? Okay, this is first reading on ordinance 02206-35. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. First reading passes unanimously. Item number 14, first reading on ordinance 02206-36. Councilman Hayes?
Yeah, this is an ordinance of the City of Gallatin, Tennessee, approving an amendment to the preliminary master development plan for Long Hollow Pike Mixed Use Development Plan with a new preliminary master development plan for Atlas Town Homes/Gallatin Town Homes, consisting of 143-unit residential development and a 1.5-acre commercial out parcel on a 16.73-acre lot located east of Highway 109 and south of Long Hollow Pike. Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Councilman Hayes, a second by Councilwoman George, open the floor for discussion. Seeing no one indicating they wish to discuss, we will proceed to the vote. This is first reading on ordinance 02206-36. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It has passed unanimously. Item number 15, this resolution R2206-45. Councilman Fan, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution amending and adopting the City of, the City of Gallatin's new pay plan, and I so move.
Okay, motion by Councilman Fan, second by Councilman Hayes, opening the floor for discussion.
Are we going to, I forgot to ask this, I wasn't here at the council, but are we going to give them a COLA raise still this year?
COLA is incorporated in this. We are going to do step increases within the year. So they will get, you know, some will get it sooner than others, and will benefit more based on their anniversary date, but they will get their step increase this year, which originally we had not planned to do because it does have an additional budgetary impact.
Because I just want to be sure, you know, we're getting this far, and I just want to be sure we don't go backwards, you know?
Well, I don't think we're going backwards. I mean, realize that our pay study experts were also doing the pay studies for lots of other cities, and so they were trying hard to put us in the market. And I do want to be clear that when you look at some of the ranges of some of our jobs, they are heartbreakingly low. But it is a market study based on what other jobs that are similar or as close to same as they can possibly get are paying. And, you know, not all jobs pay the wage that, you know, we wish they could.
I just want to say, though, I appreciate all the hard work. There's been a lot involved with this, and a lot of people have been involved, and I appreciate it. Our employees deserve it, and I appreciate everything everybody's done.
I would particularly mention Rachel Nichols and Connie Flood, and also Jill from the HR department did so much work, and Lori Smiley from IT department. I mean, those were kind of the key workers on this, and I'm most appreciative because they spent so many hours. I would get correspondence very, very late at night from Ms. Nichols, who was crunching numbers and rethinking things, and I'm very appreciative of that. I think it's very good. I think it's not going to be perfect because we're not comparing, you know, Granny Smith apples to Granny Smith apples picked on the same date from the same orchard. But, you know, I think it's as good as we can get at this point. Remember, you know, the consultant did give us guidance that he felt like that COLA is going to be key to us staying competitive. The thing that challenges me, and I'm just going to tell you this, the thing that always challenges me about the whole government pay scale thing is that when you're doing the COLA and the step increases, what happens? Your low-wage people tend to fall behind against the market, and honestly, your higher-wage people exceed the market. It's just the nature of what a 2.5% is of the salary. And so I've never liked, I've never liked the step, you know, the step schedule, but it is, it's how we operate. And I have this discussion for another day, certainly, but I have had some department heads that have discussed migrating their departments to merit pay, and I've told them that I personally am very open to that. And, you know.
I would totally agree with that.
Not all departments are probably sophisticated enough to go that route at this point, but, you know, for those that think they can do it, it might be worth giving it a shot.
I agree. That's what I was just about to bring up, too.
Thank you, I agree with you.
And one of the things that I see with, when I was going through this government survey, the study, the institute that just came through, we don't hire, we don't want companies to come here to pay less than $20 an hour, and we still have some people in our city that get less than $20 an hour. So we can't, you know, we've got to have some balance in that.
But there are always going to be jobs that pay less than other jobs. And, you know, we as a city, in both our recruitment efforts and, you know, internally, we're trying not to cannibalize each other's employees. However, we can't keep other municipalities and county government from cannibalizing our employees, and we may have done some of that unintentionally as well. But, you know, I will reiterate that we have a very, very strong benefits package. I'm very proud of it. When I first came to the city, I was really wowed with what it was, and it's only improved since then. Since, you know, I've been in office, we've added the dental and the vision coverage, we've added some holidays. Our employees appreciate that. The City of Gallatin is blessed with amazing employees who truly care about the employees. I was thinking the other day about, you know, during COVID, our citizens did not miss any services from our city, whether it was an investor needing an inspection, or somebody needing their trash picked up. And that's a credit to our employees being personally invested in the community that they serve. And they may not even live here.
We want to keep them.
Yeah, yeah, we're very, very fortunate. So I'm excited to get this in place, and it will go into effect July 3rd. So with that, this is resolution R2206-45. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It is unanimously approved. I am grateful, and I know there are several department heads and employees who are grateful as well. So, thank you, thank you. Item number 16 is resolution R2206-46. Vice Mayor Fennell?
Yes, this is a resolution reappointing Joanne Walker to the Gallatin Industrial Development Board. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Fennell, second by Councilman Hayes. Any discussion? It's resolution R2206-46. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It passes unanimously. Item 17 is resolution R2206-47. Vice Mayor Fennell?
This also is a resolution reappoint Alan Ramsey to the Gallatin Industrial Development Board. Motion to approve.
Motion by Vice Mayor Fennell, second by Councilman Fan. I should have said this about. I should have said this about Ms. Walker, but I'll say it about Ms. Walker and Mr. Ramsey. These are two people that have served for some time now. They are very dedicated and have really learned what the industrial development board is about and have become experts. And so, I'm glad that they're willing to remain and serve in that capacity. With that, any questions? It's resolution R2206-47. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It is passed unanimously. Item 18 is resolution R2206-52, Councilwoman Love.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution establishing the salary for Gallatin City Recorder from January 2023 through January 27. I so move.
Motion by Councilwoman Love, second by Councilman Overton. Is there any discussion?
The salary doesn't change for four years?
No, elected officials are set with their term of office, and I couldn't tell you when Ms. Kittle had a raise last. She basically has to say, hey, 2010. And so, it is set. So, you know, just, yeah, elected officials are set with their term, and it doesn't change during that time. And so, truly, we probably let her down by not bringing it up ourselves, but I appreciate you supporting us. I think it's appropriate. This is a resolution. Any other questions? R2206-52. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It is unanimously passed. Item number 19 is resolution R2207-53. This is Councilman Alexander is not here. Do you want to take it, Councilman Fan?
Okay, Mayor. This is a resolution approving a mural at 115 West Franklin Street, and I so move.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Fan, a second by Councilman Hayes. The mayor, the mural was presented by Jeff Henshaw at last week's meeting. It's going on what we know as kind of the Bradley Warehouse Building behind the city hall across the parking lot. I love the concept. I think it's going to be really lovely. And the artist is someone out of Nashville. They're paying pretty good fee for them to do this artist, but this, do the art, but this artist is respected and has done some really quality work in Nashville, and I think we'll be pleased with the finished product. So, questions?
Resolution R2207-53. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It is unanimously approved. That concludes our regular agenda. It brings us now to other business. I would ask if any member of this council does have other business to bring forward at this time.
I've got a couple things, Mayor. One thing that was brought to my attention, and I forgot, what was the pay of the beer board?
That was just brought, I don't remember why it was exactly brought up.
Well, it's brought up because y'all haven't approved anything yet, but right now, it's no pay. That was in with the ordinance that you deferred tonight on alcohol.
Okay, I had Mike Binkley, I think we all know Mike, showed up with a packet of what he had to study and what he had to prepare for, and I don't think the money's the issue, but I think that also that they would like to be recognized and, you know, somewhat paid. You know, I don't think the cost of the money, it was just that he thought that they're doing just as much as some of these other boards are, and I did look over the agenda, and there's quite a bit of stuff.
I realize the only paid board is the Planning Commission and the Board of Zoning Appeals, right?
Is the beer board getting paid at all?
Power board does not get paid, not by the city.
Yeah, they're being paid by those entities, not by the city.
Yeah, you can amend that because you didn't vote on it tonight, if that's what council wants to do. As I did bring this up and ask, and y'all said you didn't want any compensation, and so that's the way it's currently written, but you can amend that at the next reading if that's your desire.
Our IDBA board, they kind of do some very, you know, difficult, indepth navigations. They're not paid. The EDA board's not paid. I mean, there's about probably 10, 12 boards within the city that are not paid.
If I want to bring it back up, I can bring it back up during the work session.
Absolutely.
Another thing I want to bring up is five, seven weeks ago, if you remember, we had a citizen that come up here and spoke and upset about being annexed into the city and said that we didn't, they weren't receiving all the plans of services in the city. And if, we all know that over the last three and a half, four years that these citizens have been upset, and they're always negative towards everything we do up here. That's all of us. And it's just, there's nothing ever nice said about the City of Gallatin or any of us. And I seen that one of my fellow councilmen reached out and had a, what was said, a friendly conversation that was willing to de-annex these citizens, put them back into the county. And the councilman did bring up that that was something that they wished and desired to have done, and I think we can all hear that out there. I think, my personal opinion, is that we de-annex 1335 Long Hollow Pike, and I'm going to make a motion that we de-annex Long Hollow 1335 and put it back into the county.
I agree with Mr. Fennell on that particular party. Since I've been on this council, there's nothing this CD or county for that matter has ever done right for them, so I'll second that motion.
Ms. Haemecalli is making an indication over here that that would not be an appropriate motion, and I will, it's not on the agenda, and, you know, the route that we always go is to take it to a work session to bring it to an agenda, but I think there's probably beyond that that she would like.
It would need to be a lot of research into that issue, and it would need to be on an agenda at a work session unless, unless two-thirds of this body votes otherwise. You can, under the, under the rules, bring something up, but there's been, there's no ordinance or resolution, or I don't even really know how we do that because we've, to my knowledge, not done that. But if two-thirds of this body wants to vote on that, bring it up tonight, I guess that you can. It would not necessarily be my recommendation to do that, though.
That would be your first proper motion.
Then what's that, taking a straw, a straw poll?
No, no, no. It would be a motion to consider it.
I'll make a motion that we consider it.
But I would, okay, I have a motion to consider it.
Need a second?
Well, that is up to this body. So, I have a motion.
Second motion.
I have a motion, a second. I would certainly say that I don't feel comfortable with it because I don't think it's consistent with procedure that we have tried really hard to keep for some period of time. I don't think it's as transparent as we need to be. You know, I certainly understand probably where your, where your thoughts are coming from, but I just don't think it's the right way to do this. And if you think back to what we did, I can't think of the name of the street, but it was with the boundaries that we were trying to switch about, and we were going to.
She's lane?
Was it?
And?
No, it was the other side of the road, off of Saundersville Road back in there. Yeah, I can't remember the name of the street, but we just assumed that, you know, it would be fine to de-annex them, and apparently legally we could, but I don't think it was appropriate to not do.
Well, I'm not trying to be mean. I just think that we all feel and all know that it's always a situation and always an ongoing problem that seems like we have no remedy to fix. And when it was brought up by another councilman, I thought that that was actually a fairly good way to solve the problem.
Well, you know, I think it would be better if it were in the form of an ask by the resident, but with it not being, where we stand at this moment is that we have a motion and a second to consider it. And so, I think that's what we should vote on at this time. So, I will ask this council to vote on whether or not to consider it. Vote aye to indicate that you wish to consider it, vote no if you wish not to at this time. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
One no. Okay.
I just, I feel like, no, I feel like it needs to go back and be discussed. I mean, because I think.
I feel like it needs to be on an agenda.
Things were kind of misconstrued about that because I didn't really, I think he's talking about me as the councilperson, but I didn't, I didn't really ask him to be de-annexed or anything like that, so.
And I don't know all the details, so it would be better to discuss, to discuss it.
This was not my idea. I don't want anybody thinking it's my idea.
So, we have a motion to consider. I mean, we have a vote of five to one to consider it this evening, which means we move forward.
And I'm checking to see if it has to be, well, we had five. Five voted yes, is that correct? Okay, then that's two-thirds. Okay.
Okay, so that does allow you to consider it, and I guess at that point, your original motion could be appropriate.
I stand with the motion.
I think you need to remake it because it wasn't proper at that point.
Well, let's, let's, let's do this, then. I'll make a motion that we just, we put this on the work session for discussion. That's your, that's your advice.
And I wouldn't say that was my advice. I just, until comfortable, considering it without having gone.
Then we can hear some discussion from.
Okay, so you're.
To see if they want to stay in the city or if they want to leave.
You're making a motion to put it on the work session for next week.
Is that okay with this council?
So, that would be next week?
No work session.
Be next week.
Yes.
Okay, so I have a motion to that effect. A motion, we have a motion by Vice Mayor.
Put it on the work session.
Put it on the work session, and a second by Councilman Fan. With that, I would ask all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Okay, I will make a note to add it to next week's work session. Any other, other business, Vice Mayor Fennell? Did you have anything else, Vice Mayor?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Anyone else have other business to come before this body? Okay, seeing no one, we will close other business and move along to public recognition on non-agenda-related items, like we did at the beginning of the meeting. You may come forward. You will have five minutes to speak, and this council will not respond.
Wow, way back in communist country here. Pascal Jovens, 1335 Long Hollow Pike. It's kind of funny. The best way to get rid of an opponent is to put him out of the city. Thank you. Anyway, I was going to talk about Long Hollow Pike and Aris Lane. You know the fork where I've been talking for four years? More than six months ago, I came here, showed you a picture of a truck destroying that place, and still not has been fixed by the state, probably because they tired of fixing it. And now there are pieces of metal of the road there who are even more dangerous than before, and people still make illegal left turns, so maybe, you know, that would be nice if something was done. Oh, man. Sometime you crack me up. By the way, you probably didn't listen to me earlier, but I said plenty of positive things. You know, I thank people who work on the study, but, you know, it's hard to understand my southern accent. I have to stop there tonight because, man, you did good. Congratulations.
Anyone else wishing to speak under public comment on non-agenda-related items, you can come forward at this time. Seeing no one, I declare public comment on non-agenda-related items closed, and that brings us to a final motion of the evening. Motion to adjourn by Councilman Hayes, second by Councilman Overton. All in favor, say aye. All right, we are adjourned. Ladies and gentlemen, have a lovely evening. Please be safe going home. Thank you for being here, and spread kindness.